Being awfully slow. There we go. All right, you're live.
Okay, all set?
Yes.
Well, welcome to the May 11th, 2021, meeting of the Town of Victor Planning Board. And as always, we'll start it with the pledge of the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a meeting minutes, April 13, 2021. Anybody have any comment or question about those? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Joe Logan moves. Algalina, Joe Lindbeck raises hand. Joe Lindbeck seconds. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. We have one piece of correspondence that is relevant to tonight's agenda. That's from Dave Anderson with regards to the TNT fireworks. And his things should be, if not in your packet, certainly on the, what do you call that thing?
Dropbox.
Yeah, Dropbox, that's it. Okay, and I see Ed's here. So Ed, anything from town board?
Just quickly, we had our financial auditor in yesterday at the town board meeting. He said that we're in good financial shape despite all the things that we went through from, you know, the COVID experience. So things are good. Also, Dr. Tim Turnover from the town, school board, well, actually, the superintendent of schools came in and gave a presentation on the budget that's coming up for vote on Tuesday. And that's really kind of it for right now. We're looking at a dog park. They're going to do some preliminary planning in Harlan Fisher Park. That's it.
You should call it, you should call it a bark park. Throw it out. Any other boards or committees here? I don't see anybody. I don't hear anybody. Okay, so the legal notice for the public hearing has appeared in the Daily Messenger along with under review signs being posted on the subject parcels. Postcards were mailed to property owners within a minimum of 500 feet from the location where the initial public hearing date of each application. For applications carried over, please refer to the planning and building office. With regards to public hearings, speakers are requested to leave with comments in three minutes, and will be asked to conclude comments at five minutes.
Ernie. Do you need to have Lisa update us for the next meeting?
Give me the eagle eye here.
Sure. So your next meeting is May 25th. You have public hearing, you have Mooney Pool and Pool House on 7618 Arbor Glen Drive in the LDD. Applicant is requesting approval to construct a 400 square foot pool house and a 40 foot by 20 foot pool with a four foot high fence. You have Wade Minor Subdivision at 140 Klein Road. Applicant is requesting approval to create two lots from existing parcel. Lot one will contain 4.765 acres with the existing residence and farm structure, and lot two will consist of the remaining 24.640 acres. And then you have Wilkins RV of Victor at 7447 State Route 96. Applicant is requesting approval to demolish the existing 13,318 square foot showroom and construct a new 18,560 foot square foot showroom and any carryovers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First item agenda, agenda item is Dr. Calhoun Office Change of Use. This is 14 SP 2021. 81 Victor Heights Parkway, Zone Light Industrial. Owner is John Hoff. Tax map number 15.01-1-35.2000. 0000. Applicant is requesting a change of use permit to open a chiropractic office. Hours of operation will be Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. Friday, 7:30 AM to 4:30 PM, and two Saturdays per month, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And do we have somebody here for that application?
He was just on the phone. He's trying to get in right now. It's going to be under Amy. So give Susie a second to let him in.
Right.
Hi, sorry about that. It wasn't allowing us to answer the question.
The question? Are you Amy? It's Amanda.
Yeah, the host was asking us in the waiting room what application we were with. I went TNT fireworks, but it wasn't allowing us to respond in the waiting room.
We're not on that one yet. We're on the Dr. Calhoun Office Change of Use.
That's me.
Someone named, ah, there you are.
Yeah, I'm on my wife's computer, sorry.
It's all right. Some of us have been known to have computer problems.
Yes.
Sometimes. Not tonight, though. Okay, just briefly tell us what you want to do.
I want to move my practice to 81 Victor Heights to have more space so I can help more, more people.
Okay, where are you located now?
7171 90, Route 96, right across from the car wash.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions from Dr. Calhoun? Okay. And this is where it will be, you outlined in the yellow.
Correct.
Seems like a pretty straightforward application. Anybody have any question or comment?
Sorry, I'm all set.
Okay.
I'm all set. I'm all set as well, Ernie.
Okay, the other Joe. Scott?
I have no questions.
Okay, Al?
I'm all set as well.
So am I. Any comment from the public? Susie?
No, there are no comments.
Thank you. Well, we have a resolution on this one. It's for the Dr. Calhoun Office Change of Use, 81 Victor Heights Parkway. Today's date, 5/11/21, application number 14 SP 2021. Whereas the planning board made the following findings effect, and there are five. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on May 11, 2021, and identified no significant impacts. Now therefore, it be resolved that the project, Dr. Calhoun Office, will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared. Therefore, it be resolved that the application of Dr. Justin Calhoun DC Site Plan entitled Dr. Calhoun Office received by the Planning Board May 3, 2021, Planning Board Application Number 14 SP 2021, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. One, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid as per fee reimbursement local law adapted in November 25, 1996. Ongoing conditions number one, that the site plan comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section 4, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. And I didn't, I didn't have Wes chime in because I don't think this is the one that you reviewed, is it Wes?
No, that project wasn't referred to LaBella for review, but even had it been, I don't think we would have had any comments. So we're all set.
Okay, thanks. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Joe Logan moves, a second.
I'll second.
Oh, give me the seconds. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? None? Okay, carry five, nothing.
Want to close the public hearing?
Yes, some motion to close the public hearing. Who makes that motion? Algalina makes the motion. Joe Logan, seconds. All in favor? All right. Okay, the public hearing is closed and the resolution is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, next is the TNT fireworks tent. 12 SP 2021, 01 SU 2021. 420 Commerce Drive, it's Zone Commercial. Owner is Victor Square Retail LLC. Tax map number 6.02-2-47.100. Applicant is requesting approval for a temporary tent for sale of New York sparkling devices from June 20 through July 5, and they're requesting hours of operation from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And the board may recall last year when they were before us, we approved to 9:00 PM as a closed time. So we have somebody here, as I saw.
Hello.
Amanda?
Yes.
Still there?
I am, thank you. So we are just looking to see about getting your approval to once again be a part of your community for a couple of weeks there.
What about this closing time? I don't know if you were there last year, but there was a lot of public objection to a 10 o'clock close. So we, as a board, approve the nine o'clock close.
And, and that's acceptable. I'm perfectly happy to make that adjustment.
Okay. Okay, anybody from the board have any questions?
Is the closing time the reason for the resident contacting us and foiling us for information? Was that the purpose of that email correspondence we received?
Well, last year there were other comments, but this year it's you're talking about David Anderson. He didn't want the time to change from last year to this year.
So it was just a time issue?
Well. He submitted everything that we did last year. Susie, anybody from the public call in?
There are no comments.
Steve, I see the notes. We've met the, we got the letter looking for the anchoring the tent meeting code and all.
Right. Well, I should have to stay there. I assume if they're doing the same thing they did last year, they got their approvals last year.
Okay.
It's up to me to take a look at it. Anything else? Still nobody from the public? Susie?
No, no one.
Then we have a motion to close the public hearing. Who will make that?
I'll move. Al.
Al moves.
I'll second.
And then have to throw it to the fire to do that. Scott, seconds. All in favor?
Hi.
Closing the public hearing. Okay, public hearing is closed. And we have a resolution, TNT fireworks tent, 4-20 Commerce Drive. Today's date, 5/11/21, application number 12 SP 2021, and 0 SU, 01 SU 2021. Whereas the planning board made the following findings effect. And I'll only read the number two, which is, it is the intent of the applicant to put up a 30 by 40 foot temporary tent and a temporary container for sale of New York sparkling devices from June 20 to July 5. Hours of operation will be from 9:00 AM, there's a blank there, but then I will put 10 PM, not 9:00 PM, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And then there are nine altogether, including that. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on May 11, 2021, and identified no significant impacts. Now therefore, it be resolved that the project TNT fireworks tent will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared, and be it further resolved that the application of American promotional events and see whether the planning board, April 6, 2021, planning board site plan application number 12 SP 2021, and special use application 01 SU 2021, be approved for following conditions. Nine of them. One, that comments from the fire marshal dated April 9, 2021 be addressed. Two, that comments from the code enforcement officer dated April 27, 2021 be addressed. Three, that a peddler's solicitor slash solicitor's license be obtained from the town clerk prior to erecting tent and sales. Four, that if the peddler's slash solicitor's license is suspended, the tent will be removed at the owner's expense within 10 days. Five, that hours of operation from June 20 to July 5 will be 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Six, that the site plan approval will be rescinded within 10 days of the filing of formal complaint with the code enforcement officer if said complaint is not resolved within that 10 day period. Seven, that in the event lighting is desired, it will need to be code compliant and possibly be required to be reviewed by the planning board. Eight, that any temporary signage be removed from site entrance during non-business hours and shall not be placed within the State Route 96 right of way per town code. Nine, there should be a limit of, we don't, we're blanking here too. How many signs did you have last year?
I believe it was three.
Is everybody okay with that number?
So just, this is Wes LaBella. Just, I was looking at the resolution from last year and the limit, the number of signs was two for the resolution last year. I'm not quite, I don't recall all the discussion around, around that, but I did see that there are, there's a diagram in the applicant submission material, you know, kind of indicating where the signage would be placed.
Okay, with two signs then? Let's go.
Yes, I will mark that down.
All right. That was the last condition, and that will be it can be a limit of two signs on the tent, and she'll be compliant with town code, and be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. There's a motion on this?
I'll move.
Joe Logan, did we close the public hearing? I think we did.
You did. Yep, you did.
And a second will be, I thought, I saw Joe Lindbeck put his hand up for a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Okay, five zero. Okay, she's gone.
She's still there.
I'm here.
Oh, you're here. You were down below over there, now you're up there. Love this Zoom stuff. All right, our next item is Crown Castle, 02 SU 2021, 795 Old Dutch Road, it's Zone Light Industrial. The owner is Global Signal Acquisitions LLC. Tax map number 14.02-1-6.200/TWR. Applicant is requesting approval to modify existing wireless facility, replacing and removing six antennas, replacing nine RRUs, install three RRUs, and install three cables. It's in staff company. We're waiting for county and LaBella comments. Submit anything, Wes?
We haven't submitted our letter yet. We have reviewed the project. We will have a few minor comments. Nothing, you know, too terribly significant, just kind of crossing Ts and dotting Is. So, but I do understand that we're waiting for the county planning board also to review the project and provide feedback.
That's correct, right? Okay. All right, I'd say, David Killen, you're here for that application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, could you tell us a little bit about it?
Yeah, it's just a routine antenna upgrade that the carriers go through from time to time, updating their equipment, modernizing it, make sure they have the most efficient installation. They're removing nine antennas, replacing it with six newer models. Adding a few radio heads, those are the RRHs or RRUs. And I believe there's also a new cabinet going on the, on the platform below. But generally, it's just a, you know, modernization upgrade project.
Okay, anybody on the board have any questions? Joe Lindbeck?
Not sure what an RRU is.
It's a remote radio unit. It's, it's basically an amplifier, goes on the tower behind the antennas generally. The closer to the antenna, the more, more efficiently it works. It's just, it helps to densify the signal so that, you know, we can download our web pages or play our games on our phones or do our, our video calls much quicker.
Thank you.
Like this. Somebody else? Joe, you have anything else? Joe Lindbeck? Joe Logan?
No, I have no objections. This is well within the code, and it doesn't appear that it's going to affect visual at all. So I'm fine with it.
Okay, Al?
Agreed. No, no issues or concerns.
Okay, Scott?
No questions, no comments.
Okay. Well, as you heard, we can't give you a resolution tonight, but as soon as we hear from the county, which hopefully will be by next meeting, which should be two weeks from tonight, we'll be able to address that. Any calls from the public? Susie?
No, no comments.
Thank you. I just have a question. Is this going to, is it going to change in size at all?
The tower or what are you asking? What's going to change in size?
Well, the tower height.
Oh, no, no tower height increase, no compound expansion. It's just changing of the antennas.
Okay, thanks. And if nobody else has anything else, we'll keep the public hearing open and hopefully see you next time. Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Excellent. Next one is Gabriella Minor Subdivision. The public hearing is still open on this one. 0NMS 2021. 6756 County Road 41, Zone Residential 2. Tax map 28.03-1-7.000. Owner is LNL Specialty Company INC. Applicant is requesting approval to split the existing 10.02 acre parcel into two lots. Lot one will consist of four acres, maintain the existing house structure. Lot two will consist of, well, this was, we had this problem last time because it doesn't all add up to 10.02. But maybe we'll get that resolved. But the lot two will consist of six acres. You see, we're waiting for the driveway placement and site distance. Is anybody here for that one?
Yeah, that's, I'm here.
Oh, Lord, right. On my screen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here for that.
Okay, we had the the drawing up just a second ago. There we go. Wes, have you seen any?
Hi, Ernie. I have, I've had the opportunity to talk with BME Associates, the design folks who put together the updated subdivision plan. So they've, they've indicated the location of the tentative access point to this lot, which is something the planning board wanted to see, and identified the site distances 1,300 feet either direction. So the site distance isn't a problem. With regard to the access management standards, this would, there would be, you know, with a proposed access point here, it wouldn't meet the separation requirements that are, that are generally outlined in the Chapter 55, right? Of the town code. So the separation requirement here is 440 feet between driveways. It appears that, you know, the proposed entrance is probably in the vicinity of, you know, maybe 120 to 150 feet away from an existing drive. The gravel loop drive for the existing house on the parcel. So it'd simply require a waiver from this board if you chose to move forward with, you know, approving the, the access point. There are some constraints, you know, on the, on the site for, you know, if they, if you wanted to see that, that access to the parcel move a little bit closer towards 444 or in, on the map, I guess it would be to the, to the left or to the, to the west. There's some, there's kind of a berm on the frontage of the parcel and, and you know, the, so where they've depicted this, you know, it's, it's probably a pretty reasonable location in terms of, you know, existing topography for the parcel. You know, and maybe a future site plan review, if there's a, there's a need to modify that location or maybe close off one of the driveway points. Access points on the other parcel, you could maybe do that at another time. Happy to answer any questions if you've got any.
Okay, anybody more, any questions with Wes?
I do, Ernie.
Yeah, Joe Logan?
I'm trying to, Wes, I'm trying to understand why it's a big issue putting the driveway within a certain distance because it's not like we're, we're talking subdivision with potentially a lot of cars. Next to another subdivision that has a lot of cars coming out of it, it's one car at a time, pretty much from a residential lot. So, you know, to me, I don't think it's a big deal that it's less than 400, whatever feet it was to the next driveway entrance. There's no traffic conflict there. The only conflict you may have is if you have two cars coming out of driveways at the same time, but it's extremely unlikely. I don't know if you want to comment on that, Wes, but.
Joe, yeah, Joe, that's a very good point, and I'm glad you bring it up because we observed this scenario in other locations throughout the town and, and you know, I think there are some, I guess, I guess my own opinion in terms of the separation distance requirements for the driveways, I think there's some, some things we need to consider tweaking in the code. And, you know, like you said, this isn't a traffic generator, right? I mean, we're dealing with a single family home. There's not, we're not going to see routine and repeated vehicles slowing down throughout the day at a particular, you know, single family residence driveway. You know, a lot of these access management, my, my feeling in, in practice is the access management materials really come into play on those more commercial corridors, right? Where you've got those traffic generators, where you see routine turn movement, movements in and out of a driveway. So in this particular instance, I don't see a waiver as a, as a big issue at all for the planning board.
I mean, honestly, if you look up to the west, there's half a dozen houses between here and 444 that are very close to each other, you know, driveway placements. So I the lot sizes for residential houses are generally such that how can you possibly get that distance between two driveways unless you're talking, you know, a dozen acres for each property or something? So.
Yeah.
And so I really don't have an issue with this. It's when they're so close that they're, you know, putting snow on each other's driveway or things like that, that I think is more of an issue for a single family residential home than, than a site like this. So I'm, I have no problem with a waiver.
Okay.
Those are my two cents, Ernie.
Okay, well, thank you. Scott, anything?
Um, yeah, I agree with revisiting the code. I agree with what Joe said. I'm trying to achieve that number with the current lot density out there is not really achievable. And, and yeah, I agree that site distance isn't an issue on the street right here. And I also agree that the location, you know, from the topography is the best way in. I drove by today. I was a little surprised to see what appears to be a, a new gravel driveway in Culver. Looks to be near this location, but maybe not quite exactly where shown. And I was curious to know where that came from. It doesn't appear on the aerial photograph that.
I can answer that question. Yeah, we, we had trees removed and they wanted to access the, the property to go behind the house rather than trying to go down the front yard. So we made a decision to create a, an access point so that they could drive the heavy equipment in and then drive behind the backside of the house. And so we just, I said to them that I ordered some gravel. I just said, look, if you guys are going to go through all that, let me just put, you know, put some gravel down, and they put a pipe bin for drainage. And we just made a, basically a temporary access point. But it turned out, when I looked at a aerial photograph, there was a, there was like a pond or something, a potential pond that could fill with water. So I kept it to the right of that. And, you know, that, that's pretty much how that came about.
Did, did you obtain a permit from the county DOT then for that?
No, because it was just
No, be- because it was just, it was just for their heavy equipment and it was just temporary, we weren't, you know, I wasn't even thinking about, you know, about anything else. So, and, you know, it's really not interfering with anything.
It's temporary to the extent that it's going to be removed, you mean?
No, it was just, it was temporary usage, we weren't, at the time, we weren't planning on doing any kind of subdivision at all. And it was just a, a temporary thing to get the heavy equipment in easily.
Oh, I'm, I'm not aware of, of that definition of temporary when it comes to highway permits, but.
Well, I, like I said, it wasn't, it wasn't meant to be a driveway at the time. It was, it was for, so the heavy equipment didn't have to go down a gully to get in, you know, it was, we just made it flat so that we could get the heavy equipment in.
I, I understand, I'm just familiar with the process of getting a permit to do that, that's all.
Oh, I was, I wasn't aware that you had to have a permit to, to do something like that.
Um, I, I guess one other question I had was, you're seeking a waiver for the soil testing? And, and your surveyor indicates that the reason you are is because the property is not going to be developed.
At this, at this time.
Right. You know, personally, I don't really think that's a good answer. The, the regulation isn't there necessarily because the property is to be developed immediately, it's just there from a quality control standpoint, as I understand it. I guess that would be my comment, I'll let the rest of the board weigh in on what they think.
Wes? Any comment on that?
Well, just, I just reiterating my, my comments from our previous letter, you know, we did point out that generally when the planning boards is creating a, a new parcel, you'd want to do the due diligence at this point to assure that the lot is buildable, so that's why, you know, that's why we would do the soil testing in this particular instance to do it, to assure a septic system could be accommodated. It also, it also provides some, some assurance to a potential buyer that, you know, that they could construct a house and, and it would be feasible to do a a septic system there as well, you know, I guess you do have the possibility of someone buying the parcel that wouldn't build on it. Fairly small in size and surrounded by some residences and a golf course. So, uh, was I gonna say? The parcel is, is big enough where, you know, I guess if a conventional system weren't able to be constructive, constructed, I suppose that some sort of alternative system could be, or raised bed septic system could be installed there. So, I mean, that's, I, and that's really up to the planning board, you know, it's a, on whether or not you want to waive that requirement. It's, it's just something that I call out is, it's a generally a submission requirement for the design construction standards. It, it seems like, it seems like a good thing to, to generally require for, for subdivisions, but I guess I'll leave that up to the planning board members on what you want to do.
Anybody want to ring another one? Joe, Limbeck, Al, Joe, Logan, Scott?
Hey, I have a question for Wes actually about the proposed waiver, I agree with, with the other board members about the, the driveway and the site distances at all, but I'm not sure if approving the waiver is contingent on getting rid of one of the two current driveway points that are there, or if we would leave them as they are? And if the waiver would be contingent on removing the quote-unquote temporary driveway or leaving that as it is as well, so I, I want to make sure I understand the, the terms and conditions of the waiver that we're proposing.
Okay, well, I guess maybe at this point, I guess the way I would consider, and it's certainly subject to, to change and, and your preferences as a board. The way, the way I see it now might be the way the applicant sees it as well, is you're providing a waiver for the proposed driveway access to be in proximity, you know, to its depicted proximity to the existing looped driveways. And that you're not requiring the closure of either of those ingress or egress points on that looped driveway. So each of those would remain. And, let's see. One, one of the conditions that you might add to that, to a resolution that would also provide this waiver is that the applicant obtained a highway work permit from Ontario County for any of the, the drainage or, or improvements that are there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And as far as, as far as a waiver on the septic and the soil testing, what the, what the applicant has done in anticipation of potentially the planning board providing that waiver, they provided a note on the subdivision plan, number five, it mentions this plan is for subdivision of lots only, development of the lots required, site plan approval from the town and will be done with a separate site plan application for review and approval by the town, site plan review for each lot will need to include seeker, stormwater management requirements, septic design, water service, erosion control, and conform to the Town and Victor Design Construction Standards. No assurances are made regarding the future billability of Lot Two. So there's a little disclaimer on the, there would be that disclaimer on the Mylar, if, should you decide that you want to provide that waiver for soil testing.
Anybody else have anything for Wes or for the applicant?
Wes, so I'm thinking that since we don't know where the house would go, or a leach field or septic system, why push the issue of getting that testing and let you know on the property where that's going to be? So to me, it would make more sense to let, leave the note the way that they have it on the plans and allow them to subdivide the property with the understanding that it's not an approved building lot yet. That has to get approved with the appropriate engineering. So that's my thought on that.
Sounds good. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, no, I, I would agree with, with Joe's comments and I think, right, you know, the, the size of the parcel also comes into play and again, why I would lean towards not having to have with the requirement upfront, given that there's, you know, ample space, right, to locate the house and so I'm, I'm perfectly fine proceeding without the, the ground testing.
And, and just to follow on to that, Ernie, we don't know where any of the natural resources are on the property, they're not surveying or mapped out, so how would we possibly know where to approve? Like, a relocation of the whole driveway and the house and all that without having that engineering done for the future home location? So, they need to do that to show us that they thought about and engineered a, a location for the house, the leach field, and done all the testing to get it approved, so.
And I think the call in the, the drawing, Wes, that you mentioned, I think is, is appropriate, so again, it's kind of buyer full understanding, right, of what he or she is purchasing, right, full disclosure, so I'm, I'm fine with that.
Does that note on the, the drawing solve that problem, Wes?
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's there, is a cautionary measure, you know, if the buyer or their attorney does their due diligence and, you know, looking at the approved plat that's filed at the county, you know, hopefully they see that note and understand that, you know, there's, that's, that's the risk that they take as, as a buyer that, you know, maybe they have to do their own due diligence to figure out whether or not the lot is buildable, on their, they'll have to do that on their own because there are no issues, right? You, you as a planning board aren't making any assurances of that today.
Well, too, if that is so vague to someone scared off by the fact that that's, then, then the owner of the lot before he can sell it can, might, might have to do that engineering anyway in the future to create a lot that's buildable. At this point, they're looking to subdivide. Everything else meets the code and so, they, they may be back before they can sell it because they don't have a buyer that's interested in taking on that expense. So.
Yeah.
Okay. What have been, anything else? Okay, the resolution I don't know where it ended up, it was just prepared today. Somebody have a copy of it to take a look at? Here it is. Want to take a look at it before I read it off?
Can we assure that the notes are on the plan appropriately? Then, in this note that's under number six, under conditions prior signature? I mean, this is a statement from the board in the resolution, but it doesn't say that it has to be on the drawing, and I understand it is, but I want to make sure that it's retained on the drawing for submission to the.
Number six in the conditions prior to signing the minor subdivision plan. Not that one. Next section down.
Yeah, the next section down. Right there.
That one.
So can we add a sentence that says that this must be noted on the plan or something for that effect, and I know it is, but, and we should probably state that so that anyone looking to buy the parcel has that on the plan.
And then, we, we had talked about possibly a, a seventh one, a condition of either a application being filed and approved by the county for the quote temporary access or for it to be removed.
Right. Okay, Wes or Al or anybody that wanted to see that in there, has some language we can put in there?
Yeah, so I'm working on, I'm working on that seventh condition that the applicant obtained an Ontario County Highway Work Permit.
I've got a question, if I may.
For the temporary access drive.
Or call it for, for the pre-existing or for the existing, or, I mean, to say it's temporary is.
Yep.
Well, there's not gonna be any traffic going in and out of there, so. It's, but it's still an access point on the highway, so again, again, I think formally it would need to be permitted or, or removed, but again, I'll leave it to, to Wes.
For access drive. And. All right, Scott Harder, I'll, you may have some suggested language here, but, so what I've got for condition seven, that the applicant obtained an Ontario County Highway Work Permit for the pre-existing temporary access drive and associated drainage structures. Or any of the planning board members, if you've got a comment on that.
That sounds, that sounds fine to me.
That works, Wes.
Everybody okay with that?
The, I, the other alternative, maybe we, or another caveat we could say is, or that the temp, those temporary improvements be removed. So they either get the highway work permit, so we wouldn't, so this means we wouldn't be able to sign Mylars until the highway work permit is obtained or they remove those improvements.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that language?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Wes, when we get to that number, I'm gonna ask you to read what you got there. I don't have it.
I'll just send it to Lisa.
Who would be involved in removing that?
What do you mean?
Well, re- re- reverse the process, put it there. Bring it back to the gravel pit? Return to neutral, right, I mean, however it was before the, the, the upgrade was done. Well, it's just, it's just a load of gravel that's there, I mean, removing it, I guess, you want me to create a dip in the in the gravel to represent what was there before?
Yeah, there's a, it's, it, there's a culvert, there's a culvert pipe there and a, and a load of gravel, so it, it should be relatively.
So you want me to pull the, the culvert pipe out? And, and then we don't, we don't have to take the gravel off the property, right? Yeah, well, so first of all, i- if you obtain the county permit, then you can leave it as is, right? Oh, okay, what, what, what's involved in that, is there, what do I have, what would I have to do?
I have to get in touch with the, the County Highway Department.
I mean, do, do I have to have some kind of engineering for that, or? I, I, I'm just not familiar with that process, I guess.
I think the County Highway Department could give you all the, the forms and instructions that you'd need to accomplish it.
All right, but if they, if it's, if it's more, if it's, if it's a problem, maybe the pipe's not big enough, or maybe it's in the wrong position, or if there's a problem, that's why I was asking, if I have to remove it, what would be acceptable? What is the, what would I have to do? Well, I can't, obviously I can't put it back the way it was because it's been, you know, there's two loads of gravel that's there.
Do you?
Nearly as, nearly as possible.
Do you, do you know if that drainage pipe is in the Ontario County right-of-way?
I don't know, yeah, I don't know any of that stuff.
Okay, so, so one thing, so probably what you might want to do is, is through your design engineer here for the subdivision is, is talk with BME and also consult with Ontario County, Ontario County Highway Department on if they would like it removed or restored, ask how, to what degree, you know? You need to satisfy them because it's their, it's their right-of-way, right?
Okay, well, I thought it was, okay, that, that I didn't, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
Because I, I thought this is trying to satisfy your, your requirements, I got you.
So, but, you know, the other alternative is that you can get, get that permit from Ontario County Highway, and then maybe you install it to a satisfactory condition the way it is today.
Okay.
I just don't know, you'll have to, you'll have to consult with be it your, your BME design engineer and, and Ontario County.
Okay, I can do that.
Yeah, and if it's a permit for a temporary facility, like the driveway entrance and the pipe isn't, isn't what they would normally install for a permanent drive, then when you go to get, or whoever gets the building permit and has the engineering done for the driveway does that, they have to replace the pipe with, say, an eighteen inch, if that's what the county needs as a minimum, so as long as they approve your perm, your temporary with a twelve inch, and, and understand it's temporary and they needed something permanent bigger than and they're okay with it, you're fine.
Okay. Yeah, I was going by the tree, the tree logger guys had recommended doing all that, so, you know, I, I didn't know any better, I guess.
Well, but it's still a good thing to have, it's just they didn't get the permit.
Yeah, I, I should have checked into that, I guess.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I'm sure you can get it resolved one way or the other, either having, you can get, either getting the permit or putting it back closest way it was as possible, but certainly not gonna be a carbon copy, well, who's there?
I, I don't think it's a lot of work on the drawing, you've already got all the survey information on there and the lot lines and everything else, all they have to do is locate the driveway, put a couple lines, say, temporary access point with twelve inch culvert or something.
And then just submit that, right? And then just submit that, right?
Yeah, I, you know, BME should be able to tell you that. They do that all the time. So.
Okay. Sounds like a plan.
All right. Anybody else have anything else?
You did not.
I've motioned.
Don't move, Ernie.
Uh, closed, closed. Joe Logan moved to close the public hearing. Uh, wait a second.
Second. Yep, I got it.
I knew it. Now, second set. All in favor?
All right.
Public hearing will be closed. All right. Now I've got the resolution and when I get to the part, it's just been discussed and we'll let Wes take over. And this is for the Gabrieli Minor Subdivision, sixty-seven fifty-six County Road forty-one, today's date five eleven twenty-one. Application number zero one MS twenty twenty-one, whereas the planning board made the following findings effect, and there are eleven of them. And I'll read number eleven. That pursuant to section twenty-seven dash eight J of the town code, a recreation fee for each lot or in the event of a multiple dwelling, a recreation fee for each family unit in lieu of park land should be paid to the town before issuance of a building permit. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the enlisted action in May eleventh twenty twenty-one and identified no significant impacts. Therefore, be it resolved that the project Gabrieli Minor Subdivision will not have a significant impact on the environment and that a negative declaration be prepared. And it was further resolved that the planning board waives the town's designing construction standards for section one point two requirements for subdivision of land, including section one point eight point three point one for individual subsurface disposal systems. And to be further resolved, the planning board waives chapter fifty-five, section fifty-five dash six, paragraph D of the Victor Town Code that would require a four hundred and forty feet separation between driveways as part of access spacing requirements. And be it further resolved with the application of a state of Gino Gabrielli Minor Subdivision entitled Gabriella Minor Subdivision drawn by BME Associates dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, received by the planning board in March twenty-three, twenty twenty-one. Last revised May fourth, twenty twenty-one, planning board application number zero one MS twenty twenty-one. We approve with the following conditions. Conditions that must be met prior to the chairman signing the minor subdivision plan. One, that no final suggestions will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees that were paid as per fee reimbursement local law adopted in November twenty-five, nineteen ninety-six. Two, that before the planning board chairman signs the approved film originals, the developer should, developer should submit two copies of electronic files to the town. Copies shall be forwarded to the town engineer's office to confirm that the data on the electronic files are the same as the approved subdivision plans. Three, that section four standard approval condition, conditions for all subdivisions, major and minor, and the design construction standards be met. Four, that the comments in a letter dated April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one from La Bella Associates be addressed. Five, that the comments from code enforcement officer dated April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one be addressed. Six, the applicant should be aware that approval of a subdivision does not mean that the parcel is an approved building lot. Site plan approval is required prior to it becoming a buildable lot and before a building permit can be issued. And seven, go ahead, Wes.
Wes, before you do that, um, number six, if we just make a statement that says this shall be noted on the, on the subdivision plan, would that suffice?
Yes.
Well, there's something on it.
Well, if it, if site plan approval was required, right, yeah, they said, they have to do some more work. So Wes said that there was a note on the plans, but I want to make sure that that stays there. So just, if you just make a sentence after the end of number six, saying this shall be noted on the plans.
Yes. Okay. I've done that. Yep.
Okay.
So number seven, okay. Yep. So I, I've got a, I've got my own Microsoft Word version of this, uh, resolution. And at the end of, uh, condition number six, I added, this shall be noted on the subdivision plan. And then condition number seven, that the applicant obtained an, an Ontario County Highway Work Permit for the pre-existing temporary access drive and associated drainage structures or said improvements are removed to the satisfaction of Ontario County.
Okay. Uh, continuing, uh, conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to. One, that the minor subdivision complying with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including section four. Two, that approved subdivision maps, including conservation actions, lot consolidations, and lot line adjustments shall be submitted in digital format, AutoCAD two thousand and two, our latest version, effective January one, two thousand and four for Town Board Resolution number one ninety-three, June twenty-three, two thousand and three. And be it further resolved with the planning board secretary, which should be the planning board's approval letter. Does anybody have any other comment or any additions that you might want to see?
I'd come out.
Joe moves to a proof resolution. Two seconds.
A second.
Al second.
I, Mr. Stedden.
Okay. That was our last agenda item. We have one more though. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Joe Limbke moves. Two seconds.
Joe, Joe Limbke.
Joe Logan seconds.
Joe and Joe.
Joe and Joe, second. Cheersies. Okay, all in favor?